Time is now 6:30. And I will call to order this regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is Tuesday, July 22nd. And by way of roll call, we'll note that all members of the city council are present, with the exception of Mayor Ron Bigelow, who's on assignment tonight for the city council, and so he's asked to be excused. And speaking of our good mayor, he was responsible for our opening ceremony tonight and left us in good hands because he has invited Pastor Sid Cassius of Life Church to come and offer an invocation and a blessing upon our city. So Pastor, I appreciate you being here, and I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. There's a great story of unity found in the Bible in Genesis, Chapter 11. Let me just read six verses to you. "Now the whole world had one language and a common speech. As people moved eastward, they found a plain in Shinar and settled there. They said to each other, 'Come, let's make bricks and bake them thoroughly.' They used brick instead of stone and tar for mortar. Then they said, 'Come, let us build ourselves a city with a tower that reaches to the heavens, so that we may make a name for ourselves; otherwise we'll be scattered over the face of the earth.'" But the Lord came down to see the city and the tower the people were building. The Lord said, 'If as one people, speaking the same language, they have begun to do this, then nothing they plan to do will be impossible for them.'" What a powerful statement of unity. A unified people cannot be kept from accomplishing their goals. Of course, in this story, the Lord came down and stopped their plans by confusing their language. But they did that because their intentions were selfish and prideful. Today, West Valley City can choose to set aside selfishness, pride, lust, prejudice, anger, fear. All of those factors will only harm our city. If we take on an attitude of service, submission, humility, care and concern for one another, these attitudes will lead to a common language that we will all understand, and most importantly, embrace. And when we begin to speak the same language of selflessness, then we can plan, we can dream, we can work together toward our goals with the confidence that we, our city, will grow and succeed for the good of all people. Whatever seems impossible today can be possible tomorrow if we will work together. And we will work together if we are speaking the same language. It's not a language of race, economics, or preference. It's not a language that can be balked. It's a language that is taught by example, and may we lead the way for our city. There's a job to do, and I believe our highest calling is to keep the unity. To keep the unity because unity is more important and more valuable than engineering or money. So may God bless our leaders and our people with a spirit of service and unity. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Here's what we have passed on our special recognitions tonight, but I will note that joining the city council and the diocese, for those of you in the audience who are watching at home on WVCTV, Assistant City Manager Paul Isaac is filling in for the city manager tonight, representing the staff, as well as our city reporter, Ms. Sherri McKendrick, to help us through these proceedings. The first item of business we have is to approve the minutes of our July 8, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Those minutes are before the council and are now open for discussion.
Mayor Prokhorak move for approval of the minutes?
Second.
We have a live motion to approve the minutes of our July 8 regular meeting. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, then we'll ask all those in favor of approval, the police say aye, or nigh. And that moment appears to be unanimous. Coming up in a couple of weeks, we have a very special night here in West Valley City, and it's so special, in fact, that we tonight have asked Councilmember Steve Vincent, a council member of District 4, to read the proclamation declaring August as Neighborhood Night out month, and specifically August 5th as National Night Out in West Valley City. So councilman, the time is now yours for that proclamation.
Thank you. A proclamation declaring August as Neighborhood Nights month and August 5th, 2014, as National Night Out 2014 in West Valley City. Whereas, West Valley City strives to reinforce the importance of crime prevention awareness in the city, and whereas, crime prevention events have been planned throughout the month of August, and whereas, the National Association of Town Watch, Target, and NextdoorNeighbor.com are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, violence prevention program on August 5th, 2014, entitled National Night Out. And whereas, the 31st Annual Night Out provides a unique opportunity for West Valley City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts, and whereas, police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, and whereas, the mayor and city council of West Valley City do hereby determine that it is essential that all citizens of West Valley City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their partnership can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in West Valley City. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of West Valley City do hereby proclaim August as Neighborhood Nights month and August 5th, 2014, as National Night Out 2014 in West Valley City, and encourage residents to participate in the activities taking place throughout the city in the month of August.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Vincent, for that. We'll now turn our attention to item 7 on our agenda, which is the comment period. We have three sections of the comment period. First of all, time for public comments, as well as time for comments from our city manager, as well as any member of the council that wishes to comment. The rules are listed and posted on our agenda for this 30-minute, this period that will not exceed 30 minutes. And we do have a sign-up sheet in the back, and have had one person sign up for a public comment tonight. And I would just also note that we do have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. So if you're here to speak on application ZT-3 2014 regarding text amendment to regulate signage of public property, or for application GPC-6 2013 requesting a general plan change from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial at 4758 West, 4100 South, we'll have time for those comments at those designated times. But in the meantime, we'll head to anyone that wants to speak during this time for any of those items not listed for public hearing. Now is the time. And the first person that we do have signed up is James Wright. So James, if you want to come up to the microphone, and the time is yours, five minutes to address the council.
Okay. I'm the executive vice president of productions at Caskerie Finning. Our address is at 3200 West, 2490 South. We do precious metals recovery. We purchase precious metals from the public. And basically, what I'm coming to talk to you about is lack of response by the police department when we've been told to call them if we have felons in the office. So today, let me give you the story. We were told this morning by an investigator, police officer, that there were two persons of interest that they wanted to talk to and apprehend. So we were getting photos of these individuals. They happened to come into our office today. We called the police department, and they said, okay, we heard the dispatch. So we called dispatch. This was at 4:17 PM. And reference case number that we were told to reference was case number 14118985. So we called dispatch at 4:17, called the police department, and asked to come to our office apprehend these individuals. We waited a half hour. The police had yet to show up. We waited a further 15 minutes. After the half hour, we called and said, oh, we have someone on the way. They're close. Waited another 15 minutes, called again. Okay. And we talked about crime prevention. These people, from what I'm aware, are breaking into people's houses, stealing their jewelry. Way I look at it, prospective felons, and they've done it multiple times. This should be a high priority. Very important, we take these people off the streets. And when we get a poor response by the police department where they, after an hour, did not show up, these individuals grew antsy, they demanded the material back, and they left. You can't really do much beyond that. We have to give them back the material. Okay? It would have been nice to have the police department come in and talk to these people, arrest them, do something, but it didn't happen. The thing that really bothered me was five minutes after we called dispatch, they forget about it, they left. There's a police officer right by the maverick, not 200 meters away, pulling people over for speeding. Okay? 20 minutes later, he's using our own parking lot to pull people over for speeding. Okay? What is priority here? Speeders? Or people that are stealing thousands of dollars worth of material out of people's houses, breaking into their houses? We know these are rule breakers, and we know these are criminals. Okay? That should be high priority. Look, I understand, the police department's really busy. You know, you got emergencies, I get that. You know? Life in danger, priority number one. Someone wielding a weapon, priority number two. Okay? Felons, priority number three. I'm sorry, we gotta get these people off the street. These are criminals. Okay? Sorry, I'm in my grubby, so I came straight from work. But this is not an isolated incident either. This is a typical response. Another incident that I'm directly familiar with, it took an hour and a half for the police department to come and apprehend these individuals that we had in our office. We were told to call dispatch and have the police come and pick them up. An hour and a half. He said, oh, well, traffic issues. I get that. I get that. But this is not just this other isolated incident, this happened several times. According to the other buyers we have working for us, this has happened four to five times that they're aware of. That's unacceptable. Okay? It kind of makes me wonder, it's like, what if we had people peddling dope in our parking lot? Would we have gotten a faster response? You know? If we told people, well, we got people speeding up and down the road. Come and get them. Would we have gotten a faster response? How about, oh, we got people that we know are breaking into people's houses, stealing. Okay? It's just a matter of time before they take a gun into their house, find someone there while they're trying to burgle them, and they shoot them. These people are dangerous. They need to be taken off the street. And, you know, I feel like, you know, we called the police department, we're basically ignored. I, sorry, I'm a little emotional about it because it is, it's unacceptable. You know, and if we talk about crime prevention, that should be priority number one. I agree with you. Anyway. I've done, however I finish this.
Thank you. We appreciate you spending your night to come here and address the council and those concerns. Okay. Has anybody else come to utilize the public comment period? If not, we'll move on to part B, which is any comments from the city management tonight or responses.
Yes, I would like to respond. I think the gentleman makes a great point, and I think it's worthy of our attention. And I personally will contact our chief, who is our temporary chief right now, is going in for the chief, who's not here. Chief Schwimmer, I'll ask her if she would mind talking with you afterwards, and we'll thoroughly investigate what happened there and find out what the problem is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isaac. Any other comments from the city council tonight? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you for coming and addressing this. And Paul, I think maybe once you get to the bottom of that, might, an update for the rest of the council might be appropriate. We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy day to come and make us aware of that. We'll move past the comment period, and we do have, as I mentioned, a couple of public hearings tonight to discuss some ordinance changes. And so we will turn the time back over to our acting city manager to please introduce application ZT-3 2014 for us, please.
Thank you, sir. This is the first of two public hearings this evening. This first hearing is to receive input on an ordinance amendment to sections 11, 4, 106, and 5, 102 of the code, West Valley City Code, to amend the city ordinance governing signs. Essentially, the amendments here that have been proposed are to prohibit signage on city property that is not explicitly authorized by the ordinance.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Has anyone come to address the council regarding this application and the corresponding ordinance tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And council, the matter is now before you for any questions or comments, concerns, but we'll just open the floor up to discussion and action.
Mr. Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Inasmuch as UDOT has a policy not to allow public signs in their rideaway, even though they don't seem to enforce that lately, for whatever reason, this ordinance would bring us into line with that, treating political signs the same as other signs, not allowing them in the West Valley City Home and Control ridesway, which I think is good for our city aesthetically, for the eye pollution that I think it causes. I know other people might have different opinions. And there is also the counterbalancing thought that, well, political speech is so important, and if you can't put your sign up on a highway or freeway, then no one knows that you're making yourself available for public office. And I hear that argument, and I disagree with it. I think that there are plenty of other ways to get the message out, and plenty of houses where people support you, you can put your sign and express your political views as well. And I am in favor of this ordinance change.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vincent.
As I've, as I've thought about this over the last three weeks, since we were made aware of the changes, I've, I think I've changed my thoughts a little bit on this. And I do agree with what Councilman Bueller said about just keeping the rideaways clean and making our city appearance clean. But I've also kind of thought about just, you know, more government, and more government involvement, and more rules, and more regulations. And sometimes I think we kind of get hung up on trying to regulate everything. And so I'm probably, you know, vote not in favor of this, just because I think the ordinance we have works, and I just don't think we need more government involved.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments from the council tonight? Motions would be in order.
May I move for approval of ordinance 14-33?
Okay, we have a live motion before us to approve ordinance 1433 enacting and amending sections regarding our city sign ordinance, city property. Discussion to that motion.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Councilman, I think the most important thing here is that we are in compliance with the First Amendment. If we don't allow other free speech on this, on our public areas, then we shouldn't allow other kinds, and distinguish between those two. I think political speech is important, but I don't think that this is the right way to go about political speech. A sign in a public place, to me, that doesn't show that I should vote for someone. And there's lots of ways for people, for voters, to find out who is running. And that's really what the sign on a public place does. I think it's an eyesore. I think it's a waste of materials. It also adds to our, to our landfill after the election. A sign on private property, that's, that's a, that's a great message to send. If, if a neighbor that I respect puts a political sign in his yard, then, then that sends a good message to the other neighbors that, that he trusts this candidate and would vote for them, and that's an important message to send. But a sign in a park, or in a public rideaway, that just gets in the way, and it takes away from the beauty of our city. And so that's why I'm voting in favor of this motion.
Councilmember Bueller.
I appreciate those comments, and would add to it, but also, as far as any safety concerns, blocking vision at the rideaways, but also, what I didn't like about the previous ordinance, and we can have free speech anywhere, but the previous ordinance prefers city candidates over other speech. And I'm not at all comfortable with that. It's almost a kind of a self-protection, what we get to do it, but nobody else does. And I, it's one of the reasons that I looked forward to the review and proposed changes of the ordinance and supported.
Councilmember Layne.
So with this ordinance, it would also eliminate the other signs that pop up. So how are we going to distinguish between the city-sponsored events and the county-sponsored events? And will the county rec football leagues not be able to put signs on city property, but city-sponsored football or sports leagues would be able to? Correct?
Yeah, maybe I can have our Jody address that.
So with signage, just all signage is required to meet our current ordinance. So with temporary signs, each property is allowed one temporary banner, and it should be affixed to something that is meant to hold a sign. So really, the answer is no one should be advertising on a fence.
Even the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, we were told something different than that last week in our study session.
Yeah, but this ordinance only affects city fences. I mean, it's not private property, it's city property.
Right. That's correct. And... So when they want to put a sign up advertising Fairborn Station, they're not allowed to? Based on city property? Right. Is according to...
If it's a permanent sign, like a, just a marker to advertise that, then again, they would just need to meet our ordinances, so the property would be allowed to do that. But all temporary signs need to follow our temporary use ordinance?
And I would against it. That's different than what we heard from the other city attorney last week. I think maybe we ought to continue this one, but the city attorney's office...
We don't want to put a damper on the parks department being able to advertise their events?
Well, the ordinance as proposed doesn't change those requirements. It's just currently, the only signs that are permitted on, in public rights of way or on public property is the political signs. And so, again, that part of the ordinance is not changing.
Let me see if our chief counsel could address this as well.
The difference in what you're hearing today and what you heard last night is there is an exemption in our sign ordinance generally for public service announcements, and that is what we count those as. As to Councilman Layne's conversation or question about whether the county public service announcement would be considered by us the same as the Kevin Conde public service announcement, I would submit to you, although I'm not an ordinance enforcing officer on the street, but I would submit to you that the answer to that is yes, if it's deemed to be that. Now, we're very cautious about that, of course, because that's a, that's a, functionally could be considered a content-based decision, right? So we weigh that very carefully, and it's only related to the public service announcement. That's how we have perceived it in the past, and how we, what I would assume, perceive in the future, with regards to those signs only.
And to address this question, Ms. Carl, we also had the comment that our temporary sign ordinance doesn't allow any sign on any fence. Is that the way that it reads?
I would also say that yes, that's the way that that sign reads, that there is a, is a provision for making sure that temporary signs are on, as Jody mentioned, facilities that are suited for that. How we enforce that, I think, is a question we could ask Layne more specifically.
So that would include private property fences? We're telling people that they cannot put a political, or advertising, or any other sign on their own private property fence?
That's how we enforce it currently.
Yeah, and I think that goes back to the time, place, and manner of discussion as well. So if it's the First Amendment free speech, those regulations on where people can put them are different than the garage sale, you know, come to my open house kind of sign, is my understanding.
Well, any sign that has a message is speech. And if it's placed on private property, I don't think that, I think I could paint a sign on my house, or on my roof, and I think I could paint a sign on my fence. I don't think we should have an ordinance that prohibits free speech by private citizens on private property that had on hearing night that we do. So am I hearing correctly?
It's okay, council, if I could chime in. We may have, we have may, we have not been able to, I hope you understand this clearly, but I can't see you. Yeah, so what Brandon, what Brandon Hill told you last week is exactly how we proceed and exactly how our ordinance is. Your fence on your property, knock yourself out. Right? What, what Jody's referring to are the difference between the, the private speech on your fence on your property and the commercial speech. So commercial speech, as you know, is regulated differently than normal speech, and that's allowed by the First Amendment. Commercial speech, as it relates to the temporary signs and banners, we, we put those regulations to use there. As it relates to the private speech on private property, much like we said, or exactly like was said last week, your domain is your domain. You want to put up that I love Nixon sign? I think that's the one that you want to, you should do it.
That might have been an example that was used, but not...
And on your fence, absolutely. Sorry, sorry if I caused confusion, sir.
So the ordinance before us has a change to treat political campaign signs the same as other signs that they're prohibited in West Valley City Home and Control Public Spaces. That's it.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Good discussion. Any other comments before we call for the moment? I guess I kind of had my little soapbox speech on this last night, you know, and I hate to, I hate to put down sign ordinances or the things that we try to do to regulate this because they are important, and it's a good thing to, it's a good thing to have and a good thing to do. But in some ways, I kind of feel, as I've gone through this, and even gone through this discussion, that I don't think it matters how I vote on this, because I think we're going to have to tweak this in a year. Somebody's going to see some church sign, or some pizza sign, or something that's messing things up, or there's going to be, you know, some, some very stealthy, wise candidate that finds a loophole around some of the things that we have, or there's just going to be the overall, frankly, the practical enforcement problems of, you know, trying to police and patrol this. And, you know, as we've heard tonight, I think we have to, as a city, have some priorities. And I don't know if policing our parks on who's slapping up signs is really going to be one of our highest priorities. So in some ways, like I said, I kind of don't, I really don't know if it matters a whole lot. But, you know, to the point that I believe Councilmember Nordfeld, the thing that will lead me in order to, the two things that will enable me to vote for this tonight is, like I said, this will probably be a work in progress for longer than any of us are around. And the second thing is, is that I do feel that if the main goal of our office, which is to protect and preserve the Constitution, which is protecting free speech, this ordinance will, at least in my mind, bring all levels of speech to be a little bit more even in the eyes of the city. And so I will give my reluctant support, even though I believe we're solving, we're solving one problem and maybe creating another. So with that being said, no further comment. We'll call the question for vote and ask Ms. McKendrick to do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Layne?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Do you report to have more?
Aye. Motion carries with a majority, and I look forward to seeing those amendments being placed into action. We'll now ask Mr. Isaac to introduce our next item for public input, which is GPC-6 2013.
Thank you, applicants, excuse me for, if I mispronounce your names, Zhang and Dao have applied for a low-density residential zone change, commercial zone change, from a 1A, from an R18 to a C1, at an address located at 4758 West, 4100 South. And I already notified the Mayor Pro Tem that their folks are here, and they would wish to address the council on this issue with respect to some changes, I believe, that they would like to make to the proposal, so.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation and the introduction by that, but without objection, we'll have the applicants, I guess, come forward first to provide any information and any proposed changes at this point. So, if anyone else to come up? It's like we might have an election right here before shortly. Please come up to the microphone and... And just for our records, we need to name an address, so we're...
Okay, sir, my name, first name Chung, C-H-U-N, the last name, pronunciate is Shang, H-S-I-A-N-G. Then my daughter right next to me is my English limit, so I don't want to, you know, say something wrong, that you said deny. So, basically, that property I try use for the, like, neighborhood, those multiple business. So, it's going to like a two-level, the bottom one, it's going to be like a kind of retail, try to put like a small, like a family restaurant, 3,000 square foot, and the neighborhood market right next, another, maybe 3,000 square foot. And then, another 2,000 for like a retail rental, 8,000 in the first floor, and then second floor, basically 5,000 square foot for like a professional office use. And also, we're going to build a elevator, go to the second floor, and that is basically my plan. So, I don't know, is there anything else, any other information, you know, you guys needed to know?
Anything that you might feel would be important for the council to hear before we, because there are three items of action tonight, and so, anything regarding the general plan, changing the zoning map, or even the development agreement would be appropriate at this time.
Jared Plozek, MWA Innovate Architecture. One of the things we want to change is the, is the development agreement concerning the sloped roof. We would like to do a sloped roof over the restaurant portion, which is a one-story space, and then parapet over the two-story space. Jody, do they have those by any chance? Do you have the... There's a drawing, yeah, something, yeah, there's a drawing that shows kind of what we're, what we're looking at. And I should have brought that up quickly.
Counsel, any questions of the applicant or the architect? We get this, who are Councilmember Vincent?
I think the reason for the pitched roof is to kind of maintain a residential feel, and so, I do think that's important, that we keep on the residential feel along that corridor, and without seeing what those parapets look like, it's difficult to...
Right, we, well, so the, I've met with Jody about this, and we've tried to make it so the pitched roof will actually be at the intersection, the lower portion will be at the intersection to make it feel more of a residential feel. Then the two-story space, based on the height restrictions of 35 feet, once I put a roof on there, it's way above that, and so, and it would be mostly roof, and so, we're trying to avoid that mostly roof scenario.
I guess I have one question that was brought up last week in our study meeting, and just wondering if you could give us an update on. It was mentioned that you may have had conversations with Salt Lake County regarding the fence structure there, and that maybe a way to integrate your development here in with the existing development. Any update or anything you can inform us on?
What's that? Conde, the Conde fence?
Yes.
So between the, I didn't contact any of the county or, you know, libraries, so totally have no idea. About the fence, it belongs to the county library, so we're not going to be touching anything, the fence, the, I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I just was notified that the parties here, which we appreciate coming, they just notified staff just a little while ago about these changes, which is why we don't have them for review, so just take that into consideration as a possibility that the council may want to continue this until we can get those drawings and get that all in place. I don't mean to delay anything, but since they have not had a chance to see that, that is a possibility as well.
Any other comments, Ed? Okay. And thank you, and your English was very good. Appreciate it. Yes. And we'll continue on with the public input process here and ask if anyone else has come to address the council on this, and see if we have one, we'll ask you, name an address for our records, please.
Matthew Laker, 4903 Valley View. I just happen to be in the same neighborhood. I'm speaking off the cuff. I personally would not purchase a home on 41st, 47th, 35th, 31st. I welcome any type of small neighborhood services that could be brought into those areas. I think obviously you want to control, you know, commercial signage, architectural features, things like that, but as far as those two properties, they've been well-maintained. But just passing by them, it's, nobody is going to want to live there, so I would very much, as a resident in that neighborhood, be appreciative of at least a change to the zoning at this point. Thank you.
See if my understanding wants to convert a commercial property into a residential into a commercial.
We just need your name and address.
James Wright, 2490 South, 3200 West. I think it's always a good idea to have zoning change, mostly because, you know, if you get in a purely residential area, it creates a situation where you have to drive everywhere, you know? If you've got like a store or something where there's some relaxation of the zoning laws, where you can have a store that's locally close, where you can walk to it and stuff like that, or a restaurant, I think it adds flavor to a, to a, to a community more than anything, and on top of that, it gets people off their butts and out of their car and walking to where they want to go. So I think anytime there's a zone change and a relaxation of zoning laws, I think it's always a good idea.
Okay, thank you. It's noted approval out there. Anyone else come to speak regarding this? We'll look towards the back row now. Okay. Seeing that, I will close the public input portion of this application, and just, I think by way of information, there are three actions associated with this application. There is the ordinance to change our general plan, there is the ordinance to amend the zoning map, and then there's the resolution that authorizes the city to enter into a development agreement with the applicants. So councilmembers, seeing those three issues, need for clarification or questions or comments, and we'll take these one at a time. We'll go Mr. Buehler and then Councilmember Vincent.
When I saw this proposal last week, I wasn't concerned so much with that corner becoming commercialized, because it's typically the, or typical of that intersection and probably what's going to happen there eventually. However, I am concerned that the planning commission approved this or recommended approval based upon a development agreement, which the owners no longer want to build. And so, now we may be changing the zoning and not know what that development agreement would be, or we may pass a development agreement, a portion of them, and do something other than what they wanted to do. But all of those concerns aside, my biggest concern is the 4100 South corridor, the piecemeal change, one lot at a time, down 4100 South. While this application is in process, we are holding public meetings, discussing changes to the general plan, discussing some sort of a long-range plan with respect to 4100 South that really needs to be looked at closely, and I am opposed at this time to any changes along that corridor until we have a more comprehensive plan in place, because that is an important corridor in our city, and I would rather see no development or change to development or zoning there until we have decided what we can and want to do with that corridor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vincent. Well, I said, "Thank you," and now, turn, I'm sorry, I speak in half sentences. Thank you, Councilmember Buehler. We'll now turn our attention to the comments from Councilmember Vincent.
My comment was only, kind of reflects a little bit what Councilmember Buehler said, but I think we all look at that corner, and it seems like that's the appropriate change because of everything around it, but I think because of the change in perhaps the elevations and a request to not follow or to change the, for the style of the development agreement and the style of construction, that perhaps we ought to hold off on this till we know what that actually looks like and what the staff has.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hewitt?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Appreciate it very much. I realize that one you just mentioned about you're going to put the commercial property in that area, the west side of that is also the bank, and southwest is, remember, is the gas station, and then southeast is the car wash. So on that corner, very much is commercial. One thing I mentioned in a study meeting last week, very much the same thing I'm going to bring it up today, so maybe you could put that item into your plan. I'm a little concerned about between your property and the library, Hunter Library, right there, they have the wall, the fence about eight feet tall. But concern I have is, because the lady, the senior lady, she didn't write that kind of west side of your property, because you have two properties. The one on the west side, the lady, the old lady, she told me when one time I came in here, and I came to ask her for the deciding, and she says, kids came here and knocked on my door and throw stuff and still stubbed my back. And so, she's very reluctant, she was very reluctant to open the door for me to talk to her, because it's kind of late at night, maybe six or seven. So one concern I have is, is anyway, you can put the fence between library and your property a little bit higher, and your plan to be good, and I appreciate that you can do that.
Further comments? I guess I can make one here to throw it out, is that I agree with the comments as far as 4100 South being in a state of transition over the past decade, and that it's, without a complete picture of what exactly is going to go on in this corner, I think it's a little disingenuous of us as a city to start amending and changing things, what even the full plans aren't presented. But with that being said, I had had numerous conversations with the previous owner of this property, and had assured and told him that it seemed that in the near, in the future, when he had decided to leave his home of many years there, that the general consensus of the city would be that it would be somewhat neighborhood, neighborhood commercial, and be a way to integrate into the community somehow, and so, I would be in favor of holding off a little bit and taking a look at those extra elevations and seeing, trying to get what the city wants with what the applicant wants in line. The one thing I would say to the applicants is, is that since this is a, that as you do work with the city to get this zone change from the low-density residential to the neighborhood commercial, which, as I said, I do believe will happen, it's, since this is going from low-density commercial to, or low-density residential to some commercial, I, and the question that always needs to be asked is, is how are you bringing neighborhood? You know, it's going to be neighborhood commercial, and so how does neighborhood fit in with this space? Councilmember Hewitt talked a little bit about maybe some of the walkability issues or some of the barriers brought up by fencing, and so I would, I would like to have those questions maybe be answered to of how the restaurant, how the business spaces really mesh in with the rest of the community when we do ultimately bring this back for some type of approval, not only with the, with our general plan, but with the development agreement. So with those comments, if there's any, Councilmember Lane?
With the positioning of this property, I see that commercial is the correct call on this, a neighborhood commercial will have the least impact on the surrounding neighborhood, and I think the restaurant and neighborhood market would be very well-suited for that corner. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to continue. Do we have to do them all one by one, or can I just do them all at once?
You can make the motion however you feel is appropriate.
Well, I'll do the first one, on ordinance 14-34, and ask that the applicant bring back the elevations so that we can see those, and address the questions that were brought up in the discussion.
How long, counsel? Would you like this to be to a certain date or to a date uncertain?
I think if they can get it to us for study session on August 12th, and then back to our public by the 19th. I would like to move as quickly as possible if it meets there.
So we have a motion essentially to just postpone this till our next study meeting and next regular meeting?
Yes.
And this is the ordinance 14-34. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion to that motion? Saying no, call the question and ask all those in favor postponing actual ordinance 14-34 for the, our next study meeting and then corresponding next regular meeting. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that appears to be unanimous, so we'll bring the general plan ordinance change back to our study meeting, and now we need action on ordinance 14-35 and our resolution 14-126. Councilmember Vincent?
On ordinance 14-35, same motion as the previous to bring this back to study meeting and council meeting.
Please, a second?
Second.
Any discussion to that motion? Then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That action is also be postponed. Motion on the resolution for the development agreement.
I would move for a continuance of resolution 14-126. For the same conditions.
Any discussion to that? Then, all in favor of the same continuance on that item, keeping them all together, please say aye.
Aye.
Also appears to be unanimous, so we'll take these items up, and look forward to seeing the renderings that you have in the plans and answers you have to those questions in our, in our next meetings. We'll now move, we have three resolutions, and ask Mr. Isaac to introduce resolution 14-127 for us, please.
Thank you, sir. This is to approve an agreement with Kennington &amp; Christensen Certified Public Accountants to provide auditing services to West Valley City.
Have the engagement letter and have worked with the professionals at Kennington &amp; Christensen to audit our books here in West Valley for a time now, and pleased with the results, so we have a motion on this one.
Vote for approval of resolution 14-127.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve resolution 14-127, our agreement with Kennington &amp; Christensen CPAs. Any discussion to that? And we'll ask all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That agreement is approved. Mr. Isaac, 14-128 for us now.
Thank you. This resolution approves, is to ask the council to approve the commercial, that commercial mechanical systems company... mechanical systems company be awarded a contract to replace our HVAC systems on our city hall. The current systems have been in place for over 24 years and are needing, needing updating and replacing. Totally impacted this, so our budget is $207,000.
Okay, for the council? Councilmember Hune?
Thank you, mayor. Motion to approve resolution 14-128.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bueller. Any discussion to the motion to approve resolution 14-128, awarding a contract for a commercial mechanical to replace the HVAC rooftop units on city hall? We'll ask all those in favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Also, has passed unanimously. Paul, we can't go a night without hearing about some cost savings and some employee ingenuity, so do you have anything for us along those lines?
Yes, sir. This final resolution is to refurbish two city, two current city vehicles, 2003 International 10-wheel dump truck and a 2005 International bobtail dump truck. The result of us refurbishing that will save the city approximately $190,000.
Okay, we'll open up the discussion on this one, or who wants to make a motion? Councilmember Bueller?
Having seen what our public works have done before with refurbishing equipment and being very pleased with that, is with the quality as well as the cost, and I'm happy to, are happy to make a motion to approve resolution C dash, oh, sorry, 14-129.
Second.
Okay, we have a live motion before us to approve resolution 14-129 with comments. Is there any further comments to that? Seeing none, then we'll ask all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also passes unanimously. Any need, any other business or need for executive session? Seeing none, then we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Okay, all in favor of adjourned in the city council, please say aye.
Aye.
This body will, seeing that's unanimous, this body will stand to adjourn.